Hey, welcome this evening. I'd like to go ahead and call this work session to order. Is there a motion to accept or mod by the agenda?
I move that the agenda be accepted as presented.
Is there a second?
Second, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. All right, even though it's a work session this evening, we have letters A through M on our action agenda. So our first item is going to be the approval of Division Literacy Plan for 2024-2025 school year. So our work sessions, if you are here to speak on an individual action item, you are welcome to come up and take your three minutes before that item is introduced. So would anyone like to speak on the literacy plan?
I have with me Eileen Kinesh, the Dyslexia and English Coordinator for the Division. And I would just like to say that Eileen has been just integral in helping us to get our Virginia Literacy Plan together. She has helped to spearhead a lot of the work that has gone into the details of the literacy plan. So I appreciate her being here tonight to also answer any questions that you may have about the Literacy Act or our plan. So before you is the Warren County Public Schools Division Literacy Plan. And this coming school year will be the first year that the Virginia Literacy Act requirements go into effect. And during this first year, the VDOE is requiring that a one-year plan be put in place in all school divisions. Even though there are some varying stages of implementation, and we can kind of go into the details of that if you're interested, but our plan lays forth, the lays forth are K5 implementation for next school year and includes the resources that we already identified that we will be using, a little bit about the required training that teachers will have to undergo next school year, and also how we will be communicating with stakeholders and families is all in the plan. So the plan will be submitted to the VDOE upon board approval.
Question, Ms. Braggy.
I have a question. Thank you. Thanks for all your work on this. This is all new to me. I did a little research to see what other people and other divisions are doing, just to see what's went. One of the things I like in any plan, I mentioned this about our conference plan before, was I like to see strategies and goals laid out in metrics. I didn't see a lot of metrics for when, you know, what does success look like? There was a general plan, a beginning plan, say, okay, great, these are the resource we're going to use, this is sort of our path we're going on, but what defines it? So I was a little disappointed that, you know, I'd like to see that to be able to say, I see where we're going to be in a year.
Which was bad.
I'll kind of throw stuff this way. I understand what you're saying. I think that within our division plan as part of continuous school improvement, you will see those metrics of what the 24-25 school year will look like because the sort of training pieces and that sort of thing that's sort of broadly laid out in this is more detailed with the professional development services that'll be provided and kind of a roadmap for next year that's in our division, division plan. At that plan, I can share that at the next, at next week's board meeting because it also is going to, the state has to be submitted to the state. So we did follow the state template. So this was what was, what was provided to us. I think that part of the implementation for next year will be focused a lot on professional development, implementing high-quality instructional materials, evidence-based practices. And I think that when we did the K3 vows assessment, that'll be one metric that we'll be using to measure effectiveness. That's a new test. It may be PALS, if you notice PALS, it's now VALS. So that's available at K3. We are looking at doing a screener for 4th and 5th grade because the state does not have 4th and 5th grade vows ready to go. So we're putting some things in place to kind of get feel where the state hasn't quite caught up with the legislation yet, but bringing points well taken. But like I can certainly share the division plan that has a little bit more of that metric guide on it.
I was going to say, I think because VALS is going to be assessing new things, we don't really have a starting piece. So this year is, the state has taught us a lot about gathering that, that information. Where are we starting? So that in the future, when we make the, I think they said it's going to be a biannual plan after that, then we do have a place to put those metrics into place.
Okay. Good.
Another question, Beckford. Under the general education on Paige Beer's plan, where you talked about the high-quality instructional materials, I'm just wondering, you have the different kind of tier levels of core and supplemental instruction intervention. Are these new materials that we don't currently use? Or do we currently use these? And I mean, how are these new or different?
Well, actually, Warren County is very fortunate in that the programs that we have listed here thus far are programs that we have been using. So for example, our core instructional material is Houghton-Mifflin Hard Horts into Reading for K5. That product made the state-approved list for high-quality instructional material. If you were in a division that was using something that did not meet that list, you were adopting a new core curriculum this year and trying to implement that on top of everything else. So we're actually in a pretty good place. This list could and will expand, like you'll see, like where our special populations, it says TBD. The state is issuing releases of programs on a rolling basis, and they are not done with the vetting process. So we have a list of what programs are currently available, serve for supplementary and intervention, but it's not the complete list. And after a lot of discussion about it, we went with the programs we are familiar with that are getting, addressing some of the phonetic awareness and phonics instruction. Those are supplementary materials. We're going to be using Lexia again. We had Lexia last year as part of the all-in tutoring, so we're going to use that again. That's an improved intervention. But we're kind of waiting on the state to continue to roll out new programs. We didn't want to buy something, and then something else is on the next rollout.
So if we're trying to approve this this evening, there's a lot of TBDs on here, stuff to approve things that are TBD. Is there a way that we could?
Is there?
Oh, there's a different population.
Materials.
Then you have set assessments, there's a TBD and TBD.
Let me look at those assessments and see, oh, I've, so the grade 4th, 5th assessment and progress monitoring. So that is because VALS is only approved for, is only ready to go for K3. So we will be looking at, what we're going to try to do this coming year is pilot some different programs in our different elementarys. So like I Ready, there's a MAP assessment. So our elementary schools are going to run some different programs in 4th and 5th grade to try to determine what we as a division want to move to into 25, 26 school year. So it's a little bit of an opportunity, but not having that VALS in place to be able to vet some different programs. And that way, we are making an informed decision instead of just picking one. So, but those haven't been determined at the different schools. We're working through that process. We had a, had a meeting today. The actual final, final draft of the Virginia litter, of your plan is November 30th. November 30th. So they recognize that they're still rolling out guidance while you're writing your plan.
So the way things are approved are very specific. Like, for example, those supplemental materials, they're approved maybe for vocabulary in 3rd grade. And they're very specific how they're approved and which strands of, of reading. So we want to make sure we've got the full picture so that when we invest in something, it's going to get us the best bang for our buck, right? So that's why we didn't feel comfortable committing to something where we only have, you know, a handful of things to shoot from at this time.
Okay, then.
This is a skull, but so I don't forget later, you have Dr. Ballinger's email incorrect. It's his last name, it's spelled wrong, just for their communication. So. Any other questions for Ms. Bragg or Ms. Kinesh?
Then say, Eileen, would you like to address a couple of the questions, but you had a team mail with me and yes, like?
Sure. I said I would talk a little bit about those this evening. There was, first, there was a question about why we aren't using the Orton-Gillingham training. And you mentioned that is available from, from the state. I'm going to yield to Eileen on the specifics of OG training, but we were a little bit, like wondering a little bit, like, we're not familiar with the state provided OG training.
Just, it was just on the TEE, and that was, some of that question was about the financing of it, if that was playing a role, is it provided? So, is it not a state, or what a recent that he saw it for that?
Okay, so that is an opportunity for our teachers to apply to. They're only accepting like 150 across the state, and that would take the place of these modules should they get accepted. I have pushed that out to our teachers over this, within the past week and said, you know, you're welcome to apply. You have to serve students with disabilities for at least 50% of your NE. So that caveat is in there, as well as they need a principal recommendation. So that opportunity has been pushed out to the teachers, and that would serve as the training plus the capstone. So the state has told us that their training counts, and that's free. Then teachers who have completed Letters 1 and 2 will have to do a capstone course, as well as teachers who have taken and approved Orton-Gillingham class, which there are certain specifications as to what that looks like. They would also need to do the capstone. So the free option is the UVA-developed modules.
And that is 30 hours of training that our K5 teachers have to do.
K8, actually.
Oh, yeah. K8, K8, sorry. K8 teachers have to complete 30 hours, about 30 hours of literacy, evidence-based practices, science of reading, reading modules. We've been working with our principals and Dr. Ballinger to try to find some additional pieces in our calendar. Our calendar doesn't have a ton of room to change out PD days, but we tried to find a few places where we can offer some opportunities to have some additional PD to allow teachers to, to work on completing that training. Because as you said, you know, is it a stressor? Yes, it is. There's a lot of change coming next year. We have brand-new English standards, brand-new math standards, and implementation in the VLA all in the same year. It's unprecedented.
For elementary teachers, that's a, that's a huge lift.
And so, you know, the feedback we have gotten, yes, there's some pandering going on, but I think through positive communication and good dialogue, we started in May, meeting with all the K5 teachers and letting them know this was coming, this was the training that was going to have to, have to take place. And I think that, you know, there had been an understanding that it's, it's the law. It's not Warren County Public Schools rolling this out. So, you know, it, it's what every elementary and middle school teacher in the state of Virginia are habit to, having to do. So there's a lot of back and forths across region for, try to find time and days. But it will, I think, be a stress for especially our elementary teachers to take on all the new curriculum. And so I think continuing to encourage them, you know, be, be kind to one another and, and provide the support. We've got curriculum summer work going. We're going to offer professional learning communities so that they can talk through and tend the modules together. So we're doing things to try to support all of the, all of the transitions. And again, some things are, are solid. So, you know, we're still using our same core instructional materials. We're not having to change that. So there's some basics there that, you know, we're not going to see it changed in every single thing that we do, but there, you know, there are changes coming. Let's see, sure. Did that answer your question about the OG training?
Yes.
Yeah. And just so you understand, the change to the training of Letters 1 and 2 requirement was June 1st.
So say, did they send us the most recent document without?
This changes every week. What's required, what's available, what you have to do. It is just a constant change of messages that we're hearing as we roll the VLA out. You had a question about, I know Dr. Ballinger provided some information about the cost of implementing the VLA. We are, we do have some all-in money. If you remember, All In Virginia, it was put forth last year. We set aside, the number we set aside currently is $276,947 for all-in VLA materials, and that is to help purchase additional supplementary and intervention materials as those lists come out. That money also included salaries and benefits for student support coaches and IAs. So depending on how salaries shuffle and how many of those positions we fill, we may have to move some money. But the request at the time was $276,947 for materials, and that's from all-in. And I know Dr. Ballinger addressed like what's in the state of recognition.
And Ms. Bragg mentioned, Ms. Bragg mentioned some time. So next week, we are going to have another calendar adjustment, just to get some time. And I'll just give you another preview to, to make sure that our staff has time for training and implementation. We, you know, Ms. Bragg has went around the state to find out what schools are doing. Some are actually canceling qualification to give teachers that extra four hours to five hours to be able to do this training. And so that is one thing that we are considering as well. There's also a half day that rolls into a parent-teacher night. Instead of losing a full day or changing the old calendar, we're, we're looking at taking that and making that half-day PB day so that we can get more time in for the training for our staff. So that will be brought to the board next week, but those are some things that we're looking at to try to be creative. We also, I think we pushed out the staff where if they came in on a.
We will. I haven't done it yet, but I'll see what else we were.
But, but I'd have said, we, we used to have a program through LRCC to where if they did some summer professional development, they got that apple blossom day off for going to the, the PNE in the summer. Since that has gone away, we're, we're offering a day before teachers come back to say, you can come in on that day also, we will let you have as a kind of loss of day off. So we're doing some of those things until we still try to get teachers the time to, to be able to get the professional development they need to move it to us.
And you had also asked about, will they have time to get it all done, you know, by the time school starts? They don't have to. It's nine modules. The VLA reading specialists and Eileen are going to work on a, like, suggested pacing it to, to do the nine modules. They don't have to be completed until the end of next school year. So obviously, you want the training because we need to get it in front of our children. So we don't want to, you know, we don't want to wait until May to do all nine modules, but they don't have to be done by the time school starts.
Those things are yesterdays and that is placing on the teachers and cutting into their summer and then cutting into their time during the year. And it's, they're not getting truly compensated for that extra work. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't so overburdening, stressed.
It'll be early flight group life. So, not well.
And that's how to set K through. So it's K8 or got K8 to jurors. The feeless teachers at middle school have to do the whole 30 hours. The core content teachers of middle school also have to complete some training, but it's not 30 hours, like 20, 20 hours. So there's kind of some tiers, but it is, the implementation of impacts more than just English teachers, you know?
That reflective of some of the federal requirements as well, because I know some ordering states are also managed, they are also going by very similar training.
I, I don't know for sure.
It's all the state level at this point.
Okay. So there are some others around these states that teachers are having to do some modules downline, everybody has to do it, that type of thing. So, you know, Virginia's not alone.
No, it's not. It's kind of, it's kind of a theme, and then back to science of reading and rap stance, it's fast and other stars, it has. Just because we've talked a lot about it, I just want to clarify, the plan was only had to be for a K5 plan. Even though middle school will have to do the training modules, they're not held quite to the same standards that elementary are for next year's implementation. VALS is for K3. We'll, we'll get for 8 the following year. So there's a little bit of a rollout delay. If you recall, the initial legislation was a K3 legislation, and then they tapped on 4th through 5th. So there, that's part of what the discrepancy is, was a late add to extend it up to 8th grade. So it's a, it's a rolling basis.
Hey, the discussions that'll come later in the agenda with regard to budget stuff, and that, that a extra reading specialist, since you guys are up here, and how, how does that impact you?
So we, we currently, we currently have two VLA reading specialists that are assigned and ready to go for next year. We had budgeted for three. The third one has decided to stay in the classroom, so we need to fill that position to be able to meet the 550 students in K3 per VLA reading specialist. The fourth one, we have a call into the state now to clarify some language and some numbers because, again, with that sort of rolling implementation plan, we had, we were prepared and kind of almost ahead of the game to get our three that we need for, for K3 implementation. And then they added, you know, the fourth, the fourth and 3rd. So we're getting clarification on if we absolutely have to have a fourth one for next school year. So K3 covers us at 550 kids per reading specialist as required by the initial part of the legislation. And we talked to VDOE last week, and they were trying to talk to the red finance, so we're waiting to hear back.
Do you want to talk about?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So the K3 piece comes in where we're looking at those reading specialists. K3 is who's going to be doing vows, and then vows, if you're high-risk within one of the domains, identifies you for needing a student reading plan. Okay? And those reading specialists are going to help the teachers with the student reading plans. So that's why we kind of stuck with that K3 thought, because 4th and 5th won't be implementing those student reading plans until their vows is ready to go the following year.
So now it's complicated.
Not at all. Lots of fun. It is much.
Any other questions that we can answer to the rest of our?
Sarah Motion.
I move that the Warren County Public Schools Division Literacy Plan for the 2024-2025 school year be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the Giant Martin's Feeding School Kids Check Donation. Hi, how are you? Second time I thought I'd be able to go home and change in between curbsides.
Not happening.
Okay, so we received a $10,961.52 donation from the Giant Martins Roundup Campaign this year. And so we would like to accept that donation, and we will be using that to assist with after-school snacks that do not qualify for our CACFP program. So CACFP is a free after-school snack program which has specific stipulations, and there are some programs that do not qualify to receive those snacks. So when we don't, when we can be able to provide snacks to those programs that don't qualify for the free program, we will use this donation to cover those snack items with those after-school plans.
And teachers or coaches come to you with bless.
Yeah. So what we do is kind of just send an email to principals, and we say, how are the applicable programs? You know, here's the qualifications to CACFP, note under program that you need snacks for, here's how you can get snacks. And we take an order form for those programs, and then kind of when funds are running low, we just let them know. And this year, we kind of got down to about $1,000 in the fund, so we never did run out. We still have that, and then we'll just add the $10,000 and send that out at the beginning of the school year.
So, any additional questions for this? Is there a motion?
I move that the donation of $10,961.52 to the Warren County Schools Food Service Department be accepted with gratitude.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. You're up again, updated food service procurement plan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item?
Thank you. So Food Service recently received a procurement audit in which the, there was a corrective corrective action item requiring an update to our purchasing process. Currently, through SEDEXO, there, the process is already written out in the contract through the district. It wasn't specifically spelled out, so the auditor through the state would like it written out for the district side, not just through the contract with SEDEXO. So we were already following the procedures properly. They just wanted the plan written out and signed by Dr. Ballinger so that they had an official document that we were following the procedures that we were already following. The plan is attached, and your WCPS procurement, we were already following. They just wanted a policy specifically stating that food service was following those procedures. And so that is attached on the VDOE template specifically for Food Service now, stating that we buy all-American products when available, and we are following the formal procurement thresholds and characteristics that the school board has in your specific procurement plan. So we were already doing that. This is just formalizing that we are doing that, and that you will give Dr. Ballinger permission to sign that we are following those procedures.
Any questions for Ms. Kenzie on that? Their motion.
I move that the Warren County School authorizes the superintendent or chair to sign the updated procedure for the Food Service Department to follow when procuring items from the cafeteria of Mont.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Ms. Kenzie. Approval of requests for an additional appropriation to budget category $65,000, school food services. Anybody from the seats besides Ms. Kelly, Ms. Rissna?
Thank you. This is something we sort of do at the end of each year, once we close out our year in food service, because part of food services, we never know how many meals we're going to serve. So at the end of the year, sometimes you're, you're asking for the funds that we already have and then some to be moved over so that we can pay for the increased number of meals that we serve, but we also get reimbursed for all those things. So due to an increase in the number of meals served and corresponding increase in meal reimbursements, multiple food service and as well as the capital improvement projects, these are food service capital improvement projects at LFK, HAB, AS Roads, Ewilsa Borison, and Skylark High School. The food service is back on, is on track to exceed its original appropriation of $3,919,125 by projected $1,227,437.73. In order to receive and spend the additional amount, an increase in this category of food, the school food service budget must be approved by the Board of Supervisors to, to appropriate the funds that are already in there.
Any question is for Ms. Rissna or Ms. Kenzie?
It's not a question, but I just always like to research this. That is not extra Warren County tax care money. This is, I explain this all the time, it feels like on social media, it's not, we're not raising taxes, we're not increasing Warren County funding.
No, this, this money is in our. No, this this money is in our excess balance that we have in our bank accounts. What happens as Mr. Smith is saying is that when we have an increase in meals served, we try to budget what we think we're going to spend, but when we have that increase in meals served, our expenses naturally have to go up. And also that we have the spend down plan that BDOE has us on. So they're requiring us to spend money out of the excess balance. So we naturally went over by spending down those funds. We just didn't know how much we would go over by. And we will try to do better this year by appropriating more so that it doesn't look like we're going over. We have the funds in our fund. So no, it does not make their taxes go up by spending the money that we do have sitting in our fund there. We do have that there.
And this actually and?
No, 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 you're fine.
This actually shows that we're we're serving more people.
Yes.
It's actually it's a deposit it's saying actually.
Is there a motion?
I move that the superintendent be authorized to request that the Warren County Board of Supervisors increase the school board's fiscal year 2023-24 cafeteria fund budget at 1,227,437.73 in category 65,000-school food services.
Is there a second? Second, any additional discussion? All those in favor, I?
I.
I oppose no. Thank you.
Next, we have an MOU for the Civil Resource Officers.
Thank you. Thank you. Again.
They do.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second to make sure no one from the public says I was.
I apologize.
Go ahead, thank you.
All right. Policy KN AJ relations with law enforcement authorities requires the school board and the sheriff's office to have a MOU that sets forth the powers and duties of the school resource officer, the SRO. The MOU is reviewed and affirmed by amendment at least once every two years. The revised MOU is modeled after the Virginia School Law Enforcement partnership model MOU developed by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Warren County Public Schools and the Warren County Sheriff's Office have worked collaboratively to ensure that MOU aligns with our policies and practices. The partnership between the school division and the sheriff's office is intended to facilitate effectively timely communication and coordination of efforts for both parties. The MOU establishes a framework that both the schools and the sheriff's office can work within to achieve shared goals. The primary goals of the partnership are to create and maintain safe and secure school environments and to promote a positive and supportive school climate. This is a first reading and I've asked Sergeant Haidoo to come in to speak a little bit on the MOU. We had a group from our school division, excuse me, as well as from the sheriff's office to help put this together, but they were the driving force behind that. So I'd like to give credit where credit is due. And so I'll give you an opportunity to sit.
So the biggest changes that you'll see based off of our previous MOU and the current MOU that you guys have in front of you is we really laid out the authority based off of the Virginia model. So DCJS, the Department of Criminal Justice, has been really working on partnership to better the SRO and the school relationship so that amongst the state, we are all kind of following similar guidelines. So there's a lot more to read in this in the U, but it lays things out a lot better. So when statutes are mentioned, I've went in and I've laid out those actual statutes and what they actually mean as opposed to having somebody go and okay, well, what is 22 dash, you know? So we kind of really laid all that out in there. Additionally, one of the things that we added was under the school division responsibilities and as well as R O responsibilities is listing out exactly what the state requires to be reported to an SRO because there have been a lot of questions or, you know, what is does this meet the elements to be reported to the SRO? So we really laid out that statute in there and broke down each of the code sections and the list of technically 15 elements that meet that guideline to say, yes, if it is one of these 15 things, it's definitely a law enforcement matter. So we added that in there. So it's more clear and concise for the everyday person looking at the MOU to say, hey, what is it that your SROs are doing? The second big change that you will see in there as we also added with the new the new SSOs that have came in as of January 1st, the committee that we put together worked on developing the roles and responsibilities of the school resource officer so that it's clearly defined the difference between the SROs and the SSOs. And you'll see throughout here that the biggest difference in here is that the SSOs are going to be the ones that are responsible for the school rules, so to say, whereas our job is more of the law enforcement side. So we really laid that out in here as well as differentiating disciplinary misconduct and criminal offenses. So again, so it does seem redundant, but we just really want to paint a clear picture of what our roles are, what the SSOs roles are and the school staff. Other than that, a lot of the same stuff remained in there. And we've added some clauses in there about making sure that the staff, both of the sheriff's office and of course, the staff of the public schools are all familiar with the MOU yearly. So that's that's the biggest changes that you'll see based off of the previous MOU. So.
Thank you for your detailed work, Emma. I'm glad.
Initial questions on the first reading?
Yeah, this is fabulous. The only question that I have actually just came up at our building committee meeting before this, we were discussing the installation of the metal detector here. And so we could talk about it probably be on the SRO if the metal detector went off. I I don't remember when I read this a few days ago. Do we have there isn't anything mentioned here about metal detector, but I know Frederick County just is going to be implementing metal detectors as well, and they are working on updating their MOU as well. So what I did too is also reached out to the surrounding jurisdictions to kind of get input so that we're all again on the same page. So that's something that we can reach out to them and say, hey, how are you guys going to implement this into your policies of procedures and your MOU to ensure that, you know, whose responsibility it is going to be if that is set off? So that's something we can look into.
Any additional questions?
I had sought for a tool of type moment if you wanted to.
We have some, so yes, go ahead.
All right, on page two, page two near the bottom to roles and responsibilities. It says 100% of the salary straight eight, then it's been 50, should say 50% before the number 50%. And then on the next paragraph, the next section, it just says the policies, the policies twice on the second.
Yes, I have that worked out. That was one of the things, so there's a little bit of confusion on him. So I have it worked out on here. So that that paragraph should read shall abide by the policies of procedures when they're not in conflict with the policies of procedures of WC SO. So it is on the on our corrected one, so.
Great job.
You will see that point on the next update, so.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have the custodial service management contract renewal. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this?
Sir Smith?
Senator. I thank God, appreciate it.
Custodial contract renew. I'd like to bring out Mr. Jim White, who is our Sedexo rep and supervisor director here with Ork County Public Schools for just recognize him as I'm doing this, that there's a question and so forth that then he can answer, I can answer, we'll work together on this. On July, on June 3rd, 2020, the Warren County School Board entered into an agreement with Sedexo Operations LLC to manage the custodial operations of the school division. The agreement contains a clause that allows the contract to be renewed annually for four additional one-year periods upon the mutual consent of both parties. The recommendation is to renew the custodial management contract with Sedexo for an additional one year beginning July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. The cost of the contract is not for the 2024-2025 budget year is 2,343,583 and it is not to exceed that amount throughout that year. We were able to end this, there is a an increase in the contract and I've got confirmation today from Sedexo that the plan that we had for to increase the salaries of the Sedexo, our custodians, as well as the entry rate would be covered by this amount that we would be able to provide. And Sedexo has also put some funds toward to make toward that entry level rate to make sure that we send get that because we had at least one, if not two presentations throughout the year. It was that entry level heres votes to stay. However, that has an impact on our veterans because when we have a turnover in that, then it goes back and we can't forget the the veterans who have who continued to to pick up the load for those particular positions. So we want to make sure that we're able to to reward them with the upgrade in salary as well as an overall percentage increase. I don't know if Mr. White, if you have anything to say with the half Sedexo or how's your good? How's that? What questions may you have for us that we can perhaps answer?
Did we make any changes to the to the contract over, you know, year over year as though we're happy with how it is? It wasn't like we made any addendums or changes based on performance or things we expect?
We have not changed the scope above of what we, please, please, air jacket if I must speak. We did not change the scope and we last year went through a process with Sedexo to be able to look at the amendments that we had to make sure that we we cleared up any of those type of things that would be an issue. And this was followed by by our attorney as well as Sedexo's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move that approval be given to the superintendent to sign the amendment to the service agreement with Sedexo Operations LLC to extend the studio services from July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, remain out of 2,343,583.
Is there a sign in?
Second, any discussion on that? All those in favor, I?
I.
I oppose no. Thank you, Mr. White. It's your turn.
Next up, we have a facilities use MOU with the county of Warren. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this item?
Warren County Public Schools and the county of Warren has a strong history of facility use. This agreement was established many years ago, but has not been updated in several years. Staff has met with the Assistant County Administrator along with Parks and Recreation Staff to update the facility use agreement. This agreement is for general facility use and is not meant to be specific to any particular facility. The MOU is attached, however, I would like to hand out to the board an updated MOU that in regards relates to some language in the Bing Crosby Stadium. I am what? It didn't even have a gap in progress. He did. Big deal.
And our last meeting was our initial reading of this particular policy. And if I recall correctly, the the focus was the statements where it was fine other that we just need to look at putting in a statement and so forth that kind of brings a little bit of a historical perspective and those type of things regarding Bing Crosby Stadium. So the the addendum or the the change and so forth that we had saw on page four in regards to the stadium speaks as in consideration of Warren County Public Schools securing the funds for Bing Crosby Stadium renovation with this agreement that the stadium would serve as the home field for both high schools. Now, obviously, this would need to go to the Board of Supervisors and so forth. That would be the verbiage that we would use.
Any questions from Mr. Smith on this?
Thank you for for adding that. My concern with wanting to make sure that this was added was obviously for exchange and it's easy for history to be forgotten. And without Warren County Public Schools securing that funding for the renovation of that stadium, it wouldn't have been possible. And so I want to make sure that it's documented that our our students are entitled to use that facility because of our role in in the funding for that project. So I just I hope having this this in here as it comes up, you know, not for another five years, that future boards will be reminded of how we came to the the agreement for the Bingsby Arkham Fields. So I felt like that covered it. Do you guys think that's sufficient?
There's some discussion from some constituents talking about, you know, how many say in perpetuity, you know, that it's not just for the length of a five-year contract, it's just, hey, this is our this is our field, you know, and we can have another contract with something else, but I don't know if that's something we might want to add or whether it's it's you can't put in a contract for forever, any term on it.
If we can always add it. You bring up a good point. If it's a contract for a certain period of time, which can be updated yearly, I could I could add whatever the board desires.
I mean, it looks like in five years, when this contract is looked at again, someone would have to make the effort to review this.
True.
So there would have to be public discussion involved.
Yeah.
Like that wouldn't be a noted change, so see at that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah.
The purpose to take it out, do you want to if we submit and they are sending it?
Yeah, I also think of the contract as per specific amount of time and trying to put eternity into it is just or it's.
Yeah.
It's not perfect. I would think it did the both. Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board approves the MOU for facility use with the county of Warren as an amended document.
Is there a second? Session? Any additional discussion? All those in favor, I?
I.
I oppose them. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for all your work on that. Next, we have the second reading of the discipline policies. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on those this evening?
Mr. Smith is very ealing saying.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Our school board policies, J F C school conduct, J F C D weapons in school, J F C F drugs in schools, J F C H dash R, J F C I R substance abuse, J G D, J T E, stated suspensions, expulsions, and J G D A, disciplined students with disabilities. J G D B, disciplined students with disabilities for infliction of seriously serious bodily injury. It's not redlined, but is for review. Redline items are from legal representation or recommendations. Just a couple of changes or suggestions. That's okay. So in code J G D slash G E, the one on student suspension expulsion. In it, and this was something I tried to talk about last time and I put on there to be redlined and the lawyer said it's not right, but twice in it, it says under firearms, destructive devices, pneumatic guns, and then also under drug offenses on pages, they're not late lists pages, but basically pages four and five. It says the school board shall expel from school attendance every student who does one of these things.
of these things. I'm not advocating for it or against it, it's just, so these two documents say shall. The problem with it is you go to the document on weapons in school, JFCD, and it's, the word may is used, maybe expelled. I tried to go in, again, I don't have a horse in the race, I'm not saying which one it should be, it's just you can't say both. And so it's the same case with the drugs in school as well as the weapons in school, the word may is used, whereas in the other policy, it says shall be. So that's something, someone needs to come to a conclusion as to what the answer is. Because they mean something different.
Is this the one that's in the law both ways?
Pardon me?
Is this, I think there's one like this that's in a statute both ways, is this that one?
Well, this is in, this is in, in these ones, in the, yeah, in the stat, oh, possibly.
I don't understand.
Is that what the lawyer said?
I just, I remember we espoused, I think, I'd have to pull it up to say for sure.
It does say the shall expelled comes from, it says, as those terms are defined in BA Code, you know, 18 dot 2 dash 247. So the shall be comes from there seemingly, whereas our version is our version, that says maybe.
In the JFCD, though, it still was, though, as just, I remember one kind of code once done, I'd kill it, I remember it says, it says they shall be expelled, and then right below that, like, a few letters below it, it says, nothing in this will be concerned to be, you'll have to expel them.
Correct, yeah. It does say that too, right, in the statute, so it says that, which again is, yeah. So, yeah, it does say that. It does say, basically, you don't have to, it says shall, but if you choose not to shall, then we can have to, yeah, I get it. So maybe it's okay, I don't know, it's just something that's bothering my mind.
You should double check with our lawyer, have a recommendation, because I agree that I would prefer that our policy be consistent internally with itself, but I also want it to be consistent with the law, which is contradictory.
And you're looking at JTE.
That's the, yeah, that's the one that has, it says shall on both, both cases. One is about drug offenses, one's about firearms, destructive devices, and the first line, it says shall expelled in both cases.
JFCD is the one that says may, yeah, with the, with the weapon.
As well as JFCF, the one about drugs, says may as well. I can give these all to you, Dr. Val, on your door.
Maybe we could ask Sergeant Heydo to her on the spot, I don't know if there's a legal differentiation between the type of which drug or lending, is that what that be causing the?
And had at least any.
And that's what I'm, what page is that?
I'm, I'm at JGD and J slash GE. I was trying to find that on here.
For this, this is the policy in kind of the shall and shall.
It's the girl page four and five.
I'm just wondering if maybe the, with the, yeah, and like the legalization marijuana, maybe that was altered things for that, but not for, like, fentanyl or?
I bet it's heroin.
Something or.
My mom's heard of.
So you're looking at the 18, 2, 308, what on?
That's the one for the firearms, destructive devices, pneumatic guns, yes.
And again, according to city, it's, you can, JFC, J, in homage.
It, it was in something that we shouldn't, we're going to figure out right here, right now, tonight, but maybe if we work in conjunction with.
Share second reading. We still have a.
Well, and I, I feel like we should have a redo of the second reading. Like, I, I don't, I don't focus on having a sort of third reading and vote at the next, at the meeting next week. I don't feel like we're prepared for that. I don't, I don't let pass on these policies and not have certain.
Is why I put these together, what would you have liked, like, like on the, the other, the first reading, we had a combined, I wrote them out individually, and then you also had, like, the comments and those type of things? Because there are a lot of policies, and perhaps maybe in this format, it is kind of tough to say, let's flip to this, but what would be most helpful in that July 3 presentation that would be most helpful for you all as we kind of go through these together? What, what format, like?
I think it might be good for even the public to see what was changed from what it was before. There weren't that many changes suggested by anybody, and then those suggestions were just fixed by the lawyers to make sure they're up to code, but there weren't that many policies. I mean, I know there's been some discipline problems in the schools, but I don't know if the policies are the, what's caused it. There weren't that many changes that anyone here on this court wanted to make. We added some, some of the activities that were criminal just to match up, and maybe, maybe the sergeant could add, make sure the 15 criminal activities that, that she just listed on her form are listed, making sure they're against our policy too. But sort of seeing that, well, here, here are the things that were changed, because there weren't that many paragraphs changed, that could be beneficial to say, other than that, they were all the same.
The statute, there are some exemptions that are set out within that specific statute that 13, 308.1, and that would be, you know, a, a person who possesses such weapon or weapons as part of the school curriculum or activities, a person possessing a knife customarily used for food preparation, possesses such weapon or weapons as a part of a program sponsored or facilitated by either the school or any organization. So they're adding clauses in there, so I'm not sure if this is what your attorneys are talking about, why it comp conflicts, but, so there are some, yes, exemptions set out in that, but again, I think it's going to come down to, okay, well, it's going to be up to the school board to actually expel, but I could also look further into that on our, on our self as well.
If we, one that was in the, the general policy, that same saying shall, with the exceptions that exist, maybe that makes it a may.
Yeah. Yeah, we could look at that, so I will take a look at that.
Do we have to do them their reading minutes? We do that those reading minutes, that doesn't mean that.
You don't have to vote on it.
Not vote, like, it will still just be up, like, just talk about again. There's something that's probably up if I don't have their nodding.
Thank you for any, if they forget.
Any other items on this question? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Oh. You're on aye, which is the policy audit agreement. Would anyone like to speak on this this evening?
If you have a timer, Mr. Allen, thanks.
Per dust.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Lawrence. I strongly oppose the adoption of any SBMA policy services for our school district. This organization founded by an individual with a history of making racist social media comments should raise immediate red flags. It's deeply concerning that others within this organization have also been accused of racism. The co-chair also helped with the school name changes in Shenandoah County back to Civil War generals, and that county is no slap at the lawsuit. Such a track record is unacceptable for any entity involved in shaping policies that govern our schools and is incredibly expensive. According to an SBMA member of the York County School Board, this organization has pressured its members to vote in a particular way. This behavior is anything but impartial. Allowing such influence to infiltrate our district is a grave mistake. We should be very wary of opening the door further to an organization that prioritizes its agenda over the well-being of our students and is threatening with pressuring school board members to vote a certain way. It's also worth noting that until very recently, SBMA did not even mention public schools on their website. This is not an oversight, but a deliberate omission. Any organization truly dedicated to public education would prominently feature that in their mission. In the 18 months since its inception, SBMA has had ample time to demonstrate its commitment to public education and yet has chosen not to. Instead, they proudly identify as a conservative alternative, which raises further questions about their objective, objectivity and priorities. Moreover, SBMA's policy rating is untested. Let another district with more resources be the guinea pig. Our students and our community should not be subjected to this risky experiment. Manning, who helps draft policies for SBMA, is not a practicing attorney, but merely holds a master's degree in law. Her views on ESL education, deeming it unsustainable, led her for removal from the government, governor's education working group in 2022. This alone speaks volumes about the sustainability of SBMA to shape our policies and shows even more evidence of the organization not treating all students fairly. Both SBMA and the Stanley Foundation, which play a crucial, or which played a role in its creation, have a mission to eliminate the Department of Education. It is crystal clear that a group aiming to dismantle public education should have no place in influencing our policies. We are well aware of the financial challenges we face as a county and as a school district, however, opting for a bargain at the expense of our future is a perilous path. This organization with a leaky roof and poor foundation will cost us far more in the long run. And as far as funds go, we could always go the DIY route and do it ourselves, and it would cost nothing. Our policies must be crafted by those who represent all of our students and their diversities fairly and impartially. Let's not forget the Virginia School Board Association, though it may have a higher membership cost of our superior, higher quality services. However, I will say the effectiveness of the SBA is largely determined by our representative to that forum, ensuring our unique means are met and our voices heard. In conclusion, choosing SBMA for policy rating services is not just a bad idea, it's a decision that could have a detrimental long-term impact on our students and our community.
I think you have the solemnity. Flex. Like a starch, again, I'm not in the question.
Hello, my name is Bethany O'Neil, and I'm the mom to a Skyline High School graduate and a rising senior at Skyline High School. My husband and I willingly moved both from private to public school, but that's a story for another day. You might recognize me from the county board of supervisors' public comment when I was fighting for full fundings, a full funding of Samuel's Public Library. I was blindsided that a group wanted to shut down our public library, and now some of those familiar faces have made their way onto the county board of supervisors of Board of Education, and they are coming after our public schools. Those urging you to vote in favor of an SBMA audit is a huge red flag. Ms. Salin seems to be desperately trying to get you to side with SBMA, and Mr. McFadden is playing it cool, but we know his motives. He wrote requests to remove books, just like his buddies did on the county board of supervisors. Those are the supervisors that voted to flat fund the public school budget. My takeaway is that if they don't want a public library that welcomes you no matter how you vote, how you love, or how you pray, then they believe the save for public schools. I wonder if I have this straight. You don't get an increase in the budget, you leave the SBA and keep, that was keeping the policies up to code without a backup in place. So now 51 policies are out of legal compliance. You hire Stan Sanderson, but don't get a written contract for needed services, which then costs an arm and a leg. Then all of a sudden, a new group sweeps in that can audit your policies for a low, low price, but the prices won't stay that low if you don't act now. Something smells fishy. Speaking of fishy, I heard SBMA compared to gas station sushi, and now I can't unsee that. If you vote to let SBMA audit the policies, then what? Will they offer the low, low price to update right policies? And will those policies reflect the values of the founder of the SBMA that are quite scary when you start researching? You are about to vote if SBMA should audit the school policies, and I've heard that some will vote yes just to move on to the next two important agenda items. I know you're exhausted, but I strongly urge you to vote no to an audit by SBMA. If you vote yes, it will be like opening Pandora's box. I feel like all of this is like a kid begging for candy while you're trying to cook dinner. They beg and beg and beg, and then you finally cave and yell okay, because you know it will appease the child, so you can make a nutritious wheel. But in reality, you don't, because you're exhausted and end up getting gas station sushi on your way home, because who has the energy to cook and who doesn't like a sale? The board, excluding you, Mrs. Lott, are the exhausted caretaker. Ms. Salins, you are the obnoxious child begging for candy, and SBMA is the gas station sushi. Please vote no to a policy audit agreement of SBMA.
Any last statement?
So at our meeting on June 6, we discussed a couple of different options. At that meeting, we decided we would not be pursuing any additional policy services questions. At this meeting this evening, we agreed we would ask for a policy audit contract from the SBMA, which they did provide last minute today, really probably at like 4:30. I did get an updated contract, which just made its way onto board docs. There were a couple of changes that I can just list out now publicly, things that I, I found concerning in the initial contract and have been changed now. The first one is that the initial contact, it had said the SBMA will schedule a meeting with a school board member to go over what the school's needs are. That has been changed up to school, two school board members will, would make that contact. The second part is the review. SBMA will conduct a policy audit to determine if school board policies, I don't have the old one in front of me, I'm sorry.
Has our update relevant, applicable, and aligned with best practices?
Right.
With this change to our current and aligned with the law?
So we've removed, yes, anything about best practices. When we move on to the recommendations, the addition of policies found to be out of compliance with the policy audit will be the first policy submitted for recommendations. On the timeline, again, increase from one school board member designee to have, designees to participate in that policy review. And then also moved up the timelines for the quarterly reports, basically because this contract that was submitted to us goes from August 1, 2024 to December 31, 2025, with the original date of the last report coming in on that very last day of the contract. The new one is going to move everything up by one month. So with the first report being November 29, 2024, the next one, March 28, 2025, July 25, 2025, and then November 28, 2025, that will allow that last report coming through time for our committee members to look at it, have any questions back to those that, that are recommending the audit, the changes, and then, so get that done before the contract Any cons?
Just to clarify, though, that you, that you submitted these change requests to SBMA this afternoon, and then they got the edits done, backed this right away, correct?
It's been kind of a back and forth with questions that I asked, because again, whose best practices are they? They need to say law. If this, if SBMA is selling itself as a law-based organization, then it's going to be aligned with law, not. And as we heard earlier, there can be some conflicting things within the law itself, but we're not looking for someone's opinion or what their ideas are of a best practice here. And I did speak to them on the phone, and these are the jingles that were added today, yes. So this is the update from them. I think the other thing that I would say is, as we're looking at this, I spent a lot of time talking to everyone in the community, and I hear everything that everyone is saying with our affiliation, and what this looks like, and what our community standards are. I've also spoken to several, a few administrators in Oring County and outside of our county just to see how urgent is this for us to get our policies back into compliance? Pretty urgent, it's something we need to get done. We don't have a lot of, a lot of other options, there are things we could do. We could ask our staff that's already stretched to the absolute best that it can go to start working on this. I think that'd be a surefire way for us to lose even more of the few staff that we have. We could try to sit here and do this as a board publicly and work our way through every single word and, and look up, we saw us trying to do it already with questioning of the statutes tonight. None of those people that I talked to, I thought that was going to be a great idea for us. We could get our own policy services person, we could pay our own attorney to do it. We've already proven that Sands Anderson is costing us a little bit too much in our current budget season. Those are things we could look to in the future. I think one thing needs to be clarified, we are talking about getting our, our policies that we have now back in compliance. We're not talking about moving forward and doing new policy services with SBA, SBMA at this time. We're looking at this one, one specific thing. We're looking at this one specific thing. I think the one change that I'd asked for them to consider and for our board to consider is having two school board members make that contact. I would ask that Ms. Low and Mr. McFadden be the two board members that make that contact, have that meeting with them, and see what those policies are that are identified as the immediate need that we have to address, see what that looks like. Our contract also says that at any time that we're not getting the service that we want, so these policies come back to those two members, and they look horribly skewed or one-sided, as I've heard and received lots of emails and concerns about, then I'll be the first one to make the motion that this is over, we're not doing it. We want our policies to be in legal compliance, and that's it.
It's fun, I think it's important to point out as well that these 51 policies that are out of compliance, that did not happen, having blessed the SBA. The reason we left for the SBA is because we weren't paying for policy services, and I was noticing policies that were out of compliance, that were not being reviewed. I had no idea it was 51, but that was something that just happened.
So a couple of things that stick out for me, I will agree, 51 policies out of compliance did not happen overnight. It happened over a much longer period of time. I don't know how it happened, why it happened. It, that's where we are, that's a fact. And I, you know, I know how far our to draw administrators work. The county went through COVID, priorities during those years, we're making sure our students were being educated. Two things that stick out for me, you know, I have also talked to many people, I've received emails, I'm an educator, and I've really, you know, I've struggled with a couple of things, but a couple of things that do stick out for me is that this is a policy audit, it's not a policy service, and is upon receipt of these recommendations, the school board will be solely responsible for taking the next steps to implement whichever of the policy recommendations they deem appropriate. So it's recommendations that have been reviewed with the law, you know, and there's one new law that was changed in code that comes to July 1 that personally I would like to see us look at, because there is a, the code just changed that school board members who have a disability or who are a caregiver of a person with a disability may now have the option to attend a board meeting remotely. Personally, that impacts me. I am a caregiver of a person with a disability, and if I have the option to attend remotely and have my voice still heard and my vote still count, that would be tremendous for my family and the ability for me to still care for my child at home. That is something that comes into effect July 1 on Monday, and we are not going to be in compliance come July 1 on Monday. So personally, that is something I know is an example that I can share where that is a simple, this is the new law, this was just passed in code, we need to update our policies to reflect that ability. We have surrounding counties that have already voted and adjusted that this week. So I'm going to say again, you know, what I do see is, these are recommendations, these five people right here determine what is on that paper. The school board, part of this also in the liability, is that the school board, we know they are not giving, SBMA is not giving us legal advice, they are giving us policy recommendations based on their review of code, law, and current policies. Any final decisions about policy belong to us as a school board, and they should be done in consultation with our own legal counsel. We have done that numerous times since I've been on the board, regardless of where the policy came from, if we've had a question, we have gone and turned to our attorneys, as I've seen us do that. That, you know, is still something that I see happening. Obviously, as Dr. Pence stated, the termination, I agree 100%. Nothing should be skewed one side or the other, it's policy based on code, period. That is what our job is to do. Again, I'll go back to 51 is huge. I gave you an example of one that I know, I think I would like to request we take a look at, because it affects, you know, that's a positive game changer for me and my family. You know, and we have this information butted up against financial, extreme financial challenges right now. So that's kind of my thoughts, some things I want to point out, make it very clear, you know, hopefully everyone just had the opportunity to read. One thing I did note on our board docs, there are two documents, one says policy final, and one says just policy. The policy final is not the final, it's the other one that has the edited information. You know, I appreciate the fact that it is, there is two people written into it. I like your suggestion, I certainly support that. I think we've got two, you know, Ms. Low and Mr. McFadden.
We stop there. I just have mine, thought too many. I mean, I think exactly what you just said, when it comes, in this particular layout, it comes first to, in this example, Ms. Low and Mr. McFadden, they kind of look at it right away, okay, is there some obvious problem that's identified? Then of course it can go immediately to our attorney, but the way that it used to work always before, would go to them, then it would go to Dr. Ballinger. In this case, it will go to Dr. Ballinger if it's policies that are, I think I made my wrong, but like, so Buff would look at some of them, depending on if it was Assistant Superintendent, if it was something involving transportation, or like whoever department, whatever director it was, that department would look at those policies. You would look at ones that would affect you as superintendent or more specific, and then that would all come to the full board for readings with each of you sort of presenting your section that you would review for us.
Providing recommendations.
Providing recommendations, and then at that point, if the board had more questions legal-wise, because there was something maybe controversial or whatever, we would then go back and ask Sands Anderson for additional advice. In this would work, anything we do forward would be the same.
Yeah, I think it, you know, I think it's good to have a committee, but I also think it's vital that you have the administrators that are applying the policies on a day-to-day basis that...
Yes, and no, I didn't want that to be mistaken, that I'm saying, you know, we're just completely leaving out administrators and anything that we do next, because input from you guys would be really vital for us to even know if it makes sense.
What we're doing.
Any additional comments?
I said, thank you very much for your explanation of what it entails and what it doesn't entail, I agree with you both. Love to move forward with it.
As I mentioned.
I move that the policy audit agreement with the School Board Member Alliance, SBMA, be approved as presented.
I move that the policy audit agreement with the School Board Member Alliance be approved and updated and obtained. Mr. McFadden, Ms. Low, as our two members.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any additional discussion? This is my 90-year-old ballies. Yes.
Ms. Salins?
Aye.
Mr. McFadden?
Aye.
Dr. Funk?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mrs. Low?
Thank you. Next, we have our finalize and approve the FY25 school operating food service and facilities budgets. Anyone from, oh, I'd like to speak about this.
Dr. Ballinger and Mr. Ballatine.
Mr. Ballatine, we're going to start us off.
Yeah, soon as I catch up here. Good evening. From good sources, I am told that last night at the Warren County Board of Supervisors meeting, that the county approved a school board FY25 budget of $81,738,434. That total included $4,109,667 for the food service fund, which is category 65,000. $1,307,500 of that was for the capital improvement fund, which is category 66,000. The remaining $76,321,267 is for the school operating fund, and is spread over a number of the categories we have, from starting with instruction all the way through technology and every other thing we do in between. Now, what I will note is, the operating fund budget approved by the Board of Supervisors is $127,278 more than the operating budget that we've been talking about and looking at, and there is a reason for that. This is due to the advertised and adopted county budget being based on a state budget that is $127,278 less than what was anticipated at that time. If you'll recall, we didn't have a final state budget, and when the county had to go forward with the advertising, we thought it was going, the state revenue was going to be actually $127,278 more than what it really ended up being, and that's what happened. We get a conference committee report that doesn't really give us the detailed line item state budget, but gives us chunks of amounts that it's going to change by, and then once it's signed into law, then DOE breaks it out for each school division down to the detail, and when they did that, we realized that it's going to be $127,7278 less. So since there's currently insufficient state funds to support the total school budget that the county approved, we would recommend that the school board approve an operating fund budget that is actually $127,278 less than that approved by the county. Now, in the future, and if additional state funding up to that amount becomes available, and that could happen maybe through our membership being greater than budgeted, sales tax collections being greater than projected, but any amount up to that, this additional state funding, then the school board could decide over on the expenditure side of the budget, how you might want to use those additional funds. So that is why there is a discrepancy between what the Board of Supervisors, I would not recommend approving a budget with that $127,000 in it, because commitment may be made on it, and then if the money doesn't come, and right now it doesn't look like it will, we'd be in trouble.
And that would also take into account hitting grants that we may get, so if there's a grant that comes in, typically when we get those grants, you have to approve the increase in appropriation, and where we're going to spend it, then the Board of Supervisors have to also increase the increase in appropriation because of the grant. This way, any grants that come in, we would just come in and say, we need to increase the appropriation, because the county has already set an appropriation amount, which as Mr. Ballatine mentioned, is $127,278, $127,278 more than what we're actually projecting to be bringing in. So as those rolled in, we would need to keep tally to say, okay, we've met that threshold, now the next one has to go to the Board of Supervisors if we get an additional grant, so.
So just to clear my, these documents that you have prepared for us, some of our board docs are using that lower L that you're bringing them in already, right?
They are, and we have this for some time, that's not a change, but because of the advertising for public hearings and the county having to publish in the paper their budget, it had that number that was what we thought at that time was going to be our state funding, and what we later found out was going to be slightly less. So the next pages are all ones that we've looked at pretty much in the past. The first one shows our revenue, and down in the bottom right-hand corner, the green there, the $76,193,989 is the budget, operating budget that we're recommending, and that's $128,278,278 less than what the county approved. But again, we don't have the state funding at that level to support that, so I would not recommend doing that, adding that, including it. And as we go through, if you have any questions on any of these sheets, but again, I think you've probably seen or had a chance to look at most of those, and I won't offend a whole lot of, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Is there any chance, has there been any conversation with the county about this $127,000, to ask them if there's any wiggle room for them to eat that loss?
Well, the only way for them to eat that, the wiggle room for them to eat that loss would be if they would bump up the county appropriation, the $28,650,000. I pretty much heard they're pretty adamant about that being our appropriation, and that's in fact what they approved. So I guess it would be up to the board, if you wanted to go back and ask if they would consider that, that would, I think, take action by the board to go back and ask if they could increase the county appropriation by a like or similar amount to what the state funding is less than what we at one time anticipated.
And Mr. Ballatine, just while we're on this page, because I've seen it reported in a couple of different places throughout this budget season, that Warren County public schools, even though we're level funded locally, we'd be getting this $4 million increase. I just want to point out on this page that our actual increase from FY24 to FY25, as we're reporting, is 1.2 million, just a little over.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that while we're talking about it.
Now, I will say this, we basically this year had two budgets. We had a budget we approved July 1, based on a state budget that was sort of put in place just to get a budget in place. Then the General Assembly, as you know, came back in a special session, approved in the fall a sort of final state budget that took into account all the state revenue that was available for them. So our budget bumped up then for some very specific things, and of course you approved those things, one of those being a 2% increase in salaries July, January 1, and a number of other things that we did. So and pretty much all of those were continuing costs that we're going to, that are included in this year's budget, your school security officers and those additional positions and things like that, so.
That was half of that, and you have to remember that half that increase in November, well, I guess in September, was the all-in tutoring. 1.7 million was all-in tutoring, out of, I think it was somewhere around 2.4 million that we received. So out of that additional revenue, that was designated for tutoring and purposes that had this specific thing that we could use a fold. Can't use it for general stuff, you can't use it for paying, you know, Sedexo contracts or anything of that nature, you have to use it for what it was identified with. So that's one thing to remember, out of that, additional appropriations that we've been seeing. And of course, you know, when you look at that, back in November, we were wanting to carry 1.4 that over, and we were planning on, because the state, as you heard from Ms. Bragg and Ms. Knessh earlier, the state was supposed to be putting some information out concerning whether we were, that there was going to be some materials pushed out. And so we were trying to use 276,000, I believe was the number, to purchase those materials so that we would have them over the summer, be ready to implement. But again, because they did push that out, we only were able to spend, I think it was somewhere around $11,800 with that all-in tutoring, so that's why we're moving a big portion of that other stuff forward again. So that's why we're moving a big portion of that other stuff forward again, too, so.
And that's all the money that Ms. Bragg already spoke about earlier this season. I just wanted to clarify that that's a little bit of misinformation, that's what the study was more around.
Is that where the county is getting the $4 million increase from? It was $4 million increase after our July '23 budget was cast. Is there including how it increased in catering, the extra funding?
They're looking at that original FY24 budget. They're not taking into account that we voted to bring in the additional 2.5 million in September to bring up our total FY24 budget. And then, they're just not including that.
And of that 2.4, 2.5 million additional, 1.7 million of it is one-time funding that, quite honestly, we didn't use this year, so we're going to use it next year. But it's gone after that, and so it is deceptive from that standpoint.
Why does it say going forward into next year? It would be helpful to make sure that that point is verified.
So that is our revenue picture. The next page is, of course, the win.
No, good morning on that. So when we talk about our, you know, our support coaches have been instrumental or integral in our, in our schools. And you talk to teachers, you talk to administrators, you talk to parents. Those support coaches have been very valuable in our schools. We started those, we started out with, I believe it was 51, with our CARES positions or with our CARE funding. And when you look at that on that far-right column, you see that 1.429 million. That is the CARE funding that we lose. And so that's why we're replacing with that all-in tutoring money to help keep those. Now, it's not the same position, we still had to reduce, but we are able to still keep some of those positions. But that's where that 1.7 is replacing now. It's 1.4 that we are losing from the federal government through our CARE.
The next sheet in the stack in front of you is basically the cost of all of our salaries and benefits for all of our employees, for all of the positions and things we do. It includes a 3% plus step for grades 1 through 6. Grades 1 through 6 are all of our teachers and also all of our instructional assistants.
And that's just to clarify, that's not just the people that teach at the grades 1 through 6. Grade 6, so, and we know people get confused about that when they hear grades. It's the scales 1 through 6.
It's a pay grade.
It's a pay rate.
Not, not grade, as they would teach.
We can probably look at bottom of my.
If you're in the school system and you understand it, but it's, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what other counties use, but when you think of grade, you immediately think kindergarten first.
So it's not that just our teachers in teaching grades 1 through 6, and then the high school teachers aren't getting anything. That's not the case. High school teachers are included in middle school in our grades 1 through, actually 1 through 5 is the teacher scale, but it.
So grades 7 through 41, we got 41 grades. So continuing education. Those will receive a 3% raise, which would include their stat. So everyone will get at least a 3% increase. The benefits are spread across the table there. The, at this point, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, a couple of things. There are some additional, four additional positions down at the very bottom. The cost of those are shown, and that would give us 802 from our 798 positions we currently have. And the other thing I'll note is the health insurance. The amount we're showing there is the cost if the employer were to pick up the entire increase. We'll talk a little bit later about some ideas on that. But just so you'll know, that $65,644,713 at the bottom-right-hand corner is the total cost of salaries and benefits for basically everything we would do next year, including additional positions and taking the, absorbing the employer, absorbing the total cost of health insurance increase. And I'll be glad to answer any questions or try to on that page. And the next was just sort of something, it really doesn't have next year's budget's numbers in it. But what we did was, I know there's been a lot of talk about the non-labor budget and the importance of that. So what I did was come up with a comparison by cost center of what the appropriation was, what was spent in first full '23. That would be the budget year that ended June 30th of 2023. And then, for this year, I have the appropriation, the current expenditures, and then any encumbrances, an open purchase order that the bill hasn't come in yet for. And then, on some of them, we had, and this was done last Friday, so there's more since then. But I put in a line for pending payments. Those are the ones that accounts payable was processing at that time, but hadn't been distributed. And then, that shows you what the balance in each of those accounts is at this point. And I will caution, some like utilities, we haven't gotten our June utilities bills yet. It's not shown here, but when we talked about increasing the cafeteria fund budget, there's, they anticipated what the June bill for food service would be from SEDEXO because we won't receive it till the first couple of days in July. And that, of course, will get accrued back to this year. That's not shown here, this is just operating budgets. But that's just an example of some of the things that come in. And they're not shown here, but will end up being charged to this year. So I guess what I'd like to say is, at the very last page, where you see the available balance of non-labor for this year, as of Friday, it was $469,230. It's going to be less than that when, when you get the audit report. And we've accrued back any expenses that have been incurred up through June 30th, but not yet reported, then they will get reported back to it. So it'll shrink that number.
What's your guess on the 200,000?
I'd say probably usually about a couple hundred thousand gets approved, yes, yes, on the operating fund. On the capital improvement fund, it could be a lot larger because, in this case, Lancesville for the work completed in June, we won't receive until July. So we've got to accrue that back. We've got to accrue back any restainage because that's actually been earned, but we're retaining it, so that has to be recognized, too. But that's a whole different fund than a whole different budget.
Do we have an agreement still in place, not placed? Where do we stand with the supervisors, county supervisors, on the unspent funds being returned to us for capital improvement? Do we?
I am not aware of any agreement.
There's never been an agreement. I actually wrote an agreement, and we presented a budget meeting a couple of years ago. And then, I think of one budget meeting, then we, I think the county brought forth, what was it?
Revenue sharing.
Revenue sharing. And then, everything just kind of dropped from there. So then, this never was brought back up or presented, so.
It's been handled on a year.
And I presented, or the one that I wrote, they talked about everything either going to capital or into transportation funds.
Are we having any feelings towards what, how they may be feeling going forward with unspent funds? Or is that just a flat out no at this point?
At the moment, or even with that?
Yeah, we've always asked, Scott, you know, I think it's sort of a year-to-year thing. It depends on their financial situation, where they're at, what their needs are, both for the, what our needs are for the school system, but then county-wide, what their needs are. So I don't know that there's any hard and fast rule. I have heard them talk where they want to increase their fund balances. They like to keep the county fund balance, or they're supposed to, around 15%. I think they've slipped below that. And I, you know, so I don't know that the prospects are real good, but that, again, would be a.
For their credit rating, right?
It affects their credit rating, and of course, to have cash flow and things like that, yes.
So they did, they did return. We, and I think that's important information to talk about, too. When we look at what our funding was for the FY23 year, we had a carryover, I believe, of $895,000 is what they, what the final number was. And that did go back to Warren County's just general fund balance. So when it looks like Warren County Public Schools, whatever we have on the sheet for FY23, the county actually did receive back and cap that $895,000 of carryover.
Yeah. And I guess, just so everybody understands, when, when we have a budget and we don't spend the entire budget, it's not like the county has given us that money up at the beginning of the year, and it's sitting in account in the name of Warren County Public Schools, and we're free to spend it. And then, at the end of the year, if it doesn't get spent, then we get to keep it in our account and start the next year with it. It doesn't happen that way. The only time money comes to us from the county is when we have spent it, and it can never be more than what they've appropriated to us. So anything that doesn't get spent, it, we don't even turn it back in because it never did come to us in the first place.
Right. And we, yes, and so in the past, we just have asked, could we have it for health improvements or transportation, buses, those kind of things?
And then, the last sheet is just basically the proposed non-labor budget. And since we last met, what we talked about doing was level funding all non-labor from, for next year from the level that it's at this year. Now, when we do that, we realize there are some things that we just can't get by doing that. You just approved a contract with SEDEXO for custodial services, and there's an increase that had to be recognized in that. So if you look through, and we'll talk about these individually here in a minute, but if you go to the very last page, I think we have in yellow the items, and there's one more we'll add to it when we get to it. But increases that are not covered, but that we feel are quite essential, and we'll talk about these individually here in just a minute. But the substitute budget, we've all talked about that. Technology, we've talked about. We just mentioned custodial, the school resource officer. That is the payment for two halves of SRO. And that's part of the agreement, has been in the agreement. It got dropped from the budget at some point, but it needs to be put back in because we've got to do that. So that is sort of where we're looking at, the non-labor, level funded with these several exceptions. And then, if you go to the last sheet, that sort of is the scorecard that says where we're at in this budget process. The $76,193,989 is the amount that was approved by the Board of Supervisors less the $127,278. The salaries and benefits, we talked about it being $65,644,713. Non-labor is $10,988,227, level funded. Does not include those items, those four items, five items we talked about. But even when you just do that, we're still $438,951 short of having a balanced budget. Then, we talked about these other items. And one of the last items there that has been added is the all-in state funding required for non-labor purchases. And what we realized is, when we said, okay, we're going to level fund everything, we still needed to leave that amount in because we've got the all-in funding on the revenue side. If we didn't leave that in, then we technically couldn't use that, shouldn't use that revenue.
Well, then, it was actually all in the, you know, by the way in the setup, it was all in the labor side because it wasn't being realized in the non-labor side. And so we had to actually add that $165,74 to it, to realize that in the non-labor budget and remove that actually from the lay-留sum.
So when you add up all those items that were not covered, that adds another $707,235 to the deficit, giving us a total shortage of, in revenue, of $1,146,186. So that's the number we would have to find in the budget to bring it back in, to bring expenditures back in to balance. And so we've listed some things, we've talked about them, some things we talked about in cabinet. And since the last board meeting, I've shown in blue ink on there so you'll see any changes or whatever. And maybe Dr. Ballinger would like to talk at this point about some ideas on suggestions that you would consider to help bring the budget back into the balance.
And thank you, Mr. Ballatine, for your explanation and going over everything. You do such a wonderful job, I do appreciate it. So when we look at our considerations for getting our budget leveled, we, we know we have the insurance costs. You know, there were three options on the insurance. One, we pick it up as a division, which was the recommendation, which is how it's currently built. Then you have the second option, which is if you split the cost. So that means if, if there was, say, the family, the family plan went up $100. The division pick up 50, the employee pick up 50, that's splitting it. That would save $302,000. So that's when you get that option, too, is splitting the cost of whatever the rate was on that plan. The third option, which is actually the option that I'm recommending, is only a 7.9% on the employee's rates. So that means we took what they're currently paying. So if somebody's paying $160 for a monthly plan, it would go up to, I believe, it's $173. I can probably look if you're real, if I can correct.
At the, at this rate?
7.9% more.
Yeah, it's just, it's just 7.9% more. So it's not sharing the full cost. So instead of, you know, in the other example, yes, it's $173. So there would go up $13 a month instead of $50 a month. If that was the plan, it went up $100 a month, which means the division is still picking up more. But, you know, the thing is, we want this, we want our current individuals to realize an increase in salary. We don't want them to get a salary increase and then lose it all in insurance rates and premiums and other things that are, that are going up. So there's a, there's a balance there that we have to get into. So I'm actually recommending that, that we do option 3, which is a 7.9% increase element. The other thing I'm recommending you look at there is you have the agricultural teacher. You know, we did increase the ag teachers to 12 months, one 12 months and 11 months on the others. But again, right now, we're probably not going to find an ag teacher. So we might as well hold that position. Then you add that $94,331, which we were budgeting. The resties teacher, we're looking at our numbers right now. Because our kindergarten numbers were so high last year, we figured we were going to have an influx of kindergarten students again. Those numbers aren't reaching that right now at this point, so we can hold that teacher, hold that position. The additional reading specialist, you know, again, Ms. Bragg did an excellent job talking about where we're at, what we're looking for with our reading specialists. You know, there's also, the fourth, this is the fourth one. There's one other thing that, that, within that, we do have two at the middle schools. So the middle schools have two, one at each school. If push comes to shove, we could possibly move one of them to an elementary, but I would not, I would not want to do that simply because when you look at the numbers, it's one per 550 at the elementary, and it's one per 1,100 at the second, at the middle schools. You add both of our middle schools together, we're at 11 of 6. But that's one person traveling between two schools, taking care of both middle schools and reading plan, that's just not ideal. We need to do what's best for students, so I want to leave those two at the middle school. But right now, as Ms. Bragg and her team work to see if the three will get us there because we have the other two at the middle school, maybe that works towards our account. And just see if there's any adjustments there, then we can, we can, you know, go ahead and hold that other reading specialist, so that's another $83,000.
Would we even be able to? And then she said that we're down the third one right now, so we're trying to get that filled. Would, would it be too late for us to even buy some forks and maybe with two forks?
So I know we have some people that were going through our reading, our reading specialist cohort, and I think some of them are graduating this, are there, are there any that were read?
I'm sorry, I'm hearing about some of their presentations.
So we'll have some that, that will have now their reading specialist certification. But here's the catch 22 to that, they're already classroom teachers. So, so you don't, you know, in a situation like that, what we would do is say, okay, we will appoint you to this position, but you're going to stay. appoint you to this position, but you're going to stay a teacher until that principal can find an elementary teacher to fill that spot, and then we will leave you there. Because we've got to take care of the classroom. Now, if it's somebody from another division, we'll take them. But in our own division, we've got to still protect our classroom, and so we would need to be looking at that.
Because we identify some of these as, we're putting it on hold for this year, but let's let the county know in advance that this is definitely on our radar for next year.
Yeah. So I mean, all these positions will be the first thing that we have to put in next year. So whenever we get the budget next year, what we're cutting out right now, $1.146 million, it'll be a little bit more than that because these positions will have step raises, you know, things of that nature. That's the first thing we have to budget for next year. So when we go into our budget season next year, you're already adding $1.146 million into it. And that's not including any other increases or needs that will come out of, you know, going through with cost centers and things of that nature. So just, you know, so yes, ma'am, this will be the first thing that we will be adding into the budget for next year. Then when we look at the Skyline High School dean, you know, we have two deans over there, plus we did add the two additional school security officers over there. You know, now, Skyline High School is one of our schools, when you look at the discipline data, they have the most reported discipline data. So that is, you know, when you look at equitable funding, making sure you have the resources to address those deans, this, they will be able to manage, but, you know, they need this dean. You know, it's not something that we can say, you know, all these positions are needed. You know, the ag teachers, Skyline High School, you know, we have, what's going to happen now is, instead of having two programs or two teachers where you can fill, now students are going to have to wait maybe a semester or a year to get into the ag program. So it's pushing some things down the road just because we need that extra staffing.
Can I ask you a quick question, Ms. Ballendine? So there was a dean position at Skyline High School that was open all year, this year, right, that wasn't?
Not all year.
Okay.
It was opened until January, December, January.
And then it never got filled, though?
It didn't get filled, but we had a person in that position, and then January, February, I think there was a resignation, and so that just did not get filled from that point.
So then there was a battle, and but now we're removing another one?
There were two, yes. And then they've actually, I think, already, do they have a candidate for one? They have a candidate to fill one position.
They have one, just a decade.
Just not two. They will have one dean. So we're holding one of their dean positions. Yes, ma'am.
And assistant, well, indeed.
So there's a principal, two assistant principals, and a dean.
And then two assistants.
Three assistants.
Three assistants, okay. Still, it's a complicated thing.
So then we looked at Eve Wilson, we did have the Eve Wilson dean on there. He was talking with Ms. Knox. She has a vacant position. Her numbers in fourth grade are a little low, and she combined those classes. And so she said she doesn't have any applicants for that fourth grade, but that she would feel that with her population, she needs a dean to help with behaviors and getting they started, and that she would be able to absorb that. And so we swapped out the dean and added the fourth grade teacher on her recommendation. Then we look at, now, there's been some questions about the three special education teachers. You know, two of those were positions that were added by the board, like November, December, that just never got filled. Another one was, well, remember when we created the pathways and connection coordinator, Ms. Erdman filled that position, which, you know, this is all, one of them is her vacant position that she was in. So we had the list of a special education position because that's how we created them. But when we went through our audits with the BDOE, we found out that our staffing is pretty good within our division. And so we were going to repurpose these positions, and we wanted to focus on how to support our schools with some of our behaviors, specifically elementary. So we talked about, you know, we have our tier one is just your regular classroom, tier two is an intervention, tier three, they always hear tier one, tier two, tier three. Well, we really were trying to focus on a tier two intervention, on what could we do for tier two students, you know, for those students that before they get to that tier three, where we have to get into this other, providing other services and things of that nature. What can we do to help in that medium? And so what we were going to focus on, we did get one BCBA, but that's one BCBA for the county, and so we currently have one serving every school. And we wanted to take one of those decisions and get another BCBA. And then we wanted to take two of those positions and get either three to four, because these positions that we wanted to look at, RBTs, which are registered behavior technicians, we wanted to get three to four RBTs so that they could be working in the schools with our students, and they work under the BCBA. So then we are focusing on those behaviors within the classrooms with students. So right now, because, one, we haven't asked the board to change those over, and those are our current vacant positions, we said, okay, we're just going to have to, you know, look at those as identified positions to hold at this point in time. But that would be something to look at when we move forward, as, you know, if the funding comes available, or, you know, we're able to do something. You know, we need to focus on some of those classroom behaviors at that elementary and at the middle school, and getting these people in, adding another BCBA is, you know, is important, and then adding the RBT, that would get us, you know, get us moving in the right direction. I'm sure we, my, you know, the staff setting back there would say we would need to plan two BCBAs or ignore RBT, but that at least gets us moving in the direction, in a positive direction that we need to be moving. So I did want to explain those positions, those three sped positions that are listed there. You know, when we went through the audit, the state said our funding is, is, or not our funding, our staffing is optimal in our schools. And so that's when having conversations with Ms. McDonald, after she went through that audit with the BDOE, she said, hey, let's look at doing this. We had other additional conversations in Cabinet, trying to do, you know, how could we utilize those, you know, those positions to best meet the needs of all of our schools and specifically elementary, to focus on some of those behaviors. And that's those three positions. And then...
So if we edit the budget to remove those three sped teachers, does that mean that we're giving up our opportunity to add the BCBA and RBTs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the audit, the BDOE audit, does our work get to see that?
I mean, I think they usually go over it.
Actually, I've done all my lists, and I'd be sure about sharing.
Yeah. Usually, there should be an update. I can get with the department tomorrow and see where they are with an update. Yeah.
While we're on that, though, with the RBTs, and I could be completely incorrect about this, but are there some staff members that we currently have in training for that this summer? I believe I talked to Ms. McDonald about that.
I can't answer that question.
I think you have one. Or the stadium center, or you're sharing. Okay. Just sounded familiar, right?
But these positions, so they're on the instructional assistant scale versus the teacher scale. That's why you could take two positions and probably try to get three to maybe four if it wouldn't fit within that. That's all.
They're encircled by instructional training.
So that's why I said you could get one BCBA, trade out one of those positions for a BCBA, and then take the other two positions and see how many instructional assistants we could get out with that are certified as a MIBK. So. And then looking at nonlabor, we said, okay, and Rob and I are both just, we want to be clear with the board, be cautious on the nonlabor, because nonlabor gets so tight, you never know what can happen in a year. And, you know, we try to, you know, that's the thing about a budget. It's a projection. You project what is going to happen next year to the best of your ability. Some things you hit it, then they'll eliminate it. Other things, you miss it by all chance. And, you know, because each year is going to be different. You know, I know, Ms. Ballendine, I talked about utilities, that there were little savings in utilities this year. But next year, we could have a horrible weather, and our utility bills be, yeah, we'd be over in our utility bills. So there's all those things that what happens at each school year will determine. And so I'm going to be cautious, and I will say, okay, I would look at $100,000, you know, we could do $100,000. You know, I would propose probably looking at $75,000 right now, how to, facilities is what I would look at, with the other $25,000 coming from, spread out from our schools for maybe our secondary school specifically. But that, I would just be cautious because there are some requirements that we have as, you know, we have obligations when it comes to contracts. Those cannot be changed, you have to pay those, you know, when it comes to contracts. So when you look at that $100,000, that is a recommendation that I'm making. And also talking with principals, and I think it was a couple of weeks ago, we were going over budget, looking at ways that what we can do. Ms. Cameron, which is going to be thinking over, has taken principal at LFK next week, she was, she started talking about some staffing, and that right now, they have a floater teacher that they don't have any applicants for right now, and that she's already had conversations with her staff that says, hey, we may have to put these, you know, we may have to do with four teachers instead of five, and she's already planning with that right now. Now, that will take her classes from 18, 19, I think, 22 or 23. And I think it's fifth grade, is it fourth or fifth grade that we were talking about? I can't remember.
Bottom was stiff.
I think it was, I'm not sure.
Oh, it did.
But in conversation with her, you know, she has already met with her staff and had conversations of, hey, we are planning on starting the school year with four teachers. So, and having additional conversation with her, you know, that position could be placed off hold for a short time. And then when we look at, all right, yes, I said up at the top, we want to put $300,000 in our sub-budget, but we're running out of places to pull on. And so I said, all right, let's just reduce what we were going to put in the sub-budget by $148,000. And so that takes it down from $300,000 that we were going to put in. And, yeah, that still gets us, I think we were at 1.1, is that correct?
Yeah. Some were clean up, $1,001,001.
Yeah. And so this would actually, you know, when you look at the increase that I was proposing, that was going to take us from $728,000 to $1,028,000. Well, now just take out $148,000 of that, you know, so that drops you into that, you know, not quite at that million, but we also talked in Cabinet about doing some different things this year. We need to focus on having conversations with staff before, at the schools, if it's, for each instructional assistant, do we have to give a sub for every instructional assistant? I can understand this bed, you know, when you're one-to-one, and you have those students, but if it's a regular classroom, do we have to necessarily have that instructional assistant or get a sub to that instructional assistant that day? In the offices, can we work ways to cover with other office staff in the building when it comes to helping and supporting and that nature? Also, when we looked at it, we talked in Cabinet the other day about giving each school a budget, saying, here's what you have. Once you get past that, it is on, you know, your teachers have to cover. And that's just, have administrators monitor the, you know, the leave that's being put in. You know, sometimes it's a lot easier, as we talked in Cabinet, to get on your phone and punch in that I'm going to be out. You know, back in the day, I was growing up, I had to call in to the office and say, I'm not going to make, it's harder to have that conversation when you have to talk to somebody than it is just to hit a button and say, I'm out. And, you know, have administrators at the school monitor their budget when it comes to that, to make sure that we are really focusing on, well, people taking leave for legitimate reasons, you know, there's, and we, I'm not opposed to people taking leave, I want to get that clear. I mean, it's there, they earned it, they can use it. I've never told anybody no unless they didn't have any leave to take, because it's there for a reason. And as long as it meets that criteria, then I allow to use it. Am I going to allow somebody to take a vac, you know, go on a vacation and use their sick day? No, that's not what sick days are useful. You know, those are personal. But if you're sick or your children are sick, then yes, use your days, you've earned them, we grant them to you, take them. But can we, can we monitor that and make sure that we're having other conversations with staff and to work through things? So I said, okay, let's reduce that. Technology, I, I mean, you can look at the nonlabor budgets, technology has always expended over what was allocated to them. I'm just trying to get some things done with technology when it comes to costs that are associated to technology. So I said, okay, well, let's take out $20,000, because you can't take $80,000 out of the Sedexo contract that we just, you know, that the board just approved, and you can't take $62,000 out of the SRO contract, because that's already, you know, that's an MOU that we're going to have to have that. So where else do you fool things? And so really and truly, when you look at it, without touching salaries, with other grades or salary scales, or taking this instructional assistants and teachers from a 3% plus a step or a step plus 3% to just step inclusive, yeah, there's no other money to go, to fund it. I mean, that is just about where we're at. You can see my recommendations over on the right. I recommend that the board go with a 7.9% on the insurance rate, just on the premium for the employee. I also recommend that we hold the ag teacher. I recommend that we hold the Reston Jeffries teacher, the additional reading specialist, that would be the fourth reading specialist, the Skyline High School dean, the Eve Wilson Morrison fourth grade teacher, the three special education teachers. The, I recommend that we pull $100,000 out of nonlabor, hold the fifth grade slogan teacher at LFK, reduce the sub-budget, and reduce the technology budget. So that would get us back to where we're at with needing the $1,146,186.
You mentioned a lot, you live at the Cabinet, so I guess you've talked with your chief personnel, and they're in agreement with this?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to mention on the nonlabor budget, a couple of things. Level funding really isn't level funding, and here's why I look at it that way. And whether it's the maintenance budget, the transportation budget, the individual schools' nonlabor budgets, we've been very tight on them over the last, you know, other than for specific things, we haven't done just an across-the-board cost of living increase or whatever. The school budgets have remained flat for quite a few years. And the thing is, when we level fund from one year to the next, inflation takes away their buying power. So yes, it's level funded, but they can't buy the same repair parts, parts and stuff like that from one year to the next. So really, their buying power is getting reduced as we go. And if you look at the one report there, if you see where the schools, well, this school had this much money left at the end of this year, part of that is due to the fact that, and we mentioned this, that we've put out a request to the schools to hold at about 80% of their budget because of some overruns in other areas, one of them being substitutes that we knew were going to happen and were happening to help offset that. So I really believe, particularly at the school level, at most all paces, if they had been given freedom to spend 100%, it would have been pretty close to that for them by the end of the year. I don't know if that, you know, helps with that, but I would say that, you know, the nonlabor budget is... non-labor budget is, sounds like an easy target because that doesn't affect an individual like when you look at salaries and positions and, and I'm certainly not advocating we do anything with them, but just, um, just sort of.
I think one, um, one example, and I don't know if there are others, but Skyline Middle School where it looks like they ended up with 33,000, there, where there's some grant money that's in their budget.
Yeah, that's deceptive. We talked in cabinet about that. We're going to those school improvement grants, of which we will have more than just that one. Um, we're going to manage those from a central office budget so it doesn't distort the school's budget because when you throw 55,000 or whatever it is in that budget and, and it's there one year and hopefully goes away the next year, um, it looks like, oh gosh, we've reduced them to, no, we really didn't. It was, you know, this one-time type of thing. So we're going to manage those, um, in Ms. Bragg's budget next year when we get those, those in.
And the thing also that I recall, you know, because it's a lot of fixed costs at the schools, really the only place where administrators at the school level, when they have to, to reduce funding, and it's going to come out of really two areas that they have flexibility to repair. And those two areas truly a bit classroom. And that's educational supplies because that's really the only thing that they have flexibility. And, you know, your copier is going to cost you each year what your copier is going to cost. Your paper is going to cost you each year. So, you know, a lot of those fixed costs that they have are there. The flexibility, the only flexibility they have is then it becomes instructional supplies, which that means we're, we're buying less for our students and supporting our teachers and students in the classroom. And then it also, you know, from professional development. You know, we, we look at focusing on tier one instruction and getting our, again, teacher certified. Well, if we're pulling away that staff development money, now we're just hurting that teacher in that classroom, which is affecting instruction. So, you know, there's not a lot of wiggle room when it comes to the school, the administrators, when it comes to their non-labor budgets either, um, because then you start pulling it out of those cabinets.
Well, and I can tell you what happens there. I was just gonna say, you know, and when you're talking about those educational supplies and correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, that, so for every school, there typically would be that principal, a lot's a certain amount that that teacher can spend on that classroom every year. Like they can order supply, instructional supplies that they need to use in that classroom. Um, and that, you know, I don't know what they might, if it varies by school, if that's set by you.
So, I, you know, I'll be honest with you, a lot of great administrators, a lot of the administrators have, that, and there's, you know, and, and it's been going on, I mean, for years before I even came here. Uh, so I don't know, some of them may say, okay, each class is going to get this, or some of them may say, we're going to focus on science this year, math this year, history this year, and then they, they purchase a lot, or they may ask teachers, hey, give us everything that you need. And they just try to go down through that list and buy as much as they can for, for, for all staff members to be equitable. Um, yes, I don't know.
My, my example was like, you know, for example, maybe if, yeah, I don't know, if everybody got to spend 300 dollars a year, um, you know, I'm thinking back to the first year I was a teacher, 25 years ago, and they said, you get this. I got this big thick catalog and said, 300 dollars. And I'm like, yes. Um, that, you know, that didn't go very far though, even 25 years ago. So, you know.
If we're giving those teachers the same 300 dollars, it's really not going very far.
Right. I don't know how much it is now. I mean, I, I, I know what I've experienced in the last couple of years as a, an admin, but I won't share that. Um, but, you know, my point is, is that is, if it's reduced, that's still, that's then more supplies that teachers are going to be buying out of their pocket when they're at Walmart and they see those specials. Um, and it doesn't even account for, as, as you were saying, the inflation that we've seen. Um, you know, what we used to buy two years ago has gone up two, three times. Um, I was just trying to give a little bit more of an example of, of what those educational supplies and how they, they go. Because, you know, if we run out of pens, pencils, you know, there may not be an unlimited amount of pencils in the office. So we gotta go buy boxes of pencils. We gotta go buy eraser caps, dear goodness, you know, to lose sticks, all those consumables that allow teachers to have active engagement activities. They're expensive.
They are.
Thank you, Dr. Ballinger and Mr. Valentine for catching us up on this. What questions do we have?
So, our next items on UNAD obviously kind of play a role in this conversation. Um, I just, I never like seeing things removed from the budget that directly impact the classroom. And what just continues to be a glaring expense to me is the, is the sub-budget with, with ESS. I mean, that's a 30.9% markup. That, that is money that, that 30.9%, and we're talking about on such like a million dollars. That's money that is leaving our community and going to this outside corporations. And I think, I think, Dr. Ballinger, I think you kind of caught on to what I was asking about all the lead-up questions with what's the percentages of use at each school versus the percentage of need with the population and the, um, positions that need subs? Because that's exactly what I would like to do is, is have accountability for each school because they have certain schools that are running their sub-budgets up higher than what I would call their fair share, their proportion. Um, and then we have other schools that are, are not using anywhere near their fair share. And then looking at with the ESS data, what caught me off-guard was seeing that assignments that are actually assigned by ESS is only 24%. So that being said, while the teachers were using the frontline system, they were finding that they were, they were doing their own placements, but we're still paying that 30.9% markup on every sub that's placed. So, I, obviously, the ship kind of sailed on getting subs back in-house to get that cost truly cut back. But, um, I don't know, conversations just need to be had and just really include staff on these conversations, but it's, um, we're now, we're now at least offering to, hey, we're offering the option to cash in your days at a fair market value, right? Like 15 dollars is a joke, 100 dollar cash in, now they have a true incentive not to, to use them. And that still is cost savings to us because they're not using the ESS with that 30.9% markup. Um, so I would just like to ask staff to just consider that when you go to take the day, when we hasten from what used to be a 300 to 500,000 dollar sub line item to now over a million, this is where stress and strain and, and we, we could have absorbed the savings with that, or the increase in the, uh, health insurance, for instance. We could have paid for that just by cutting ESS out of the picture. I would much rather see staff have their health insurance paid for fully and not send that money on to ESS. So it's, um, some stinky either-or situations here. But, um, can we do going forward, which is this year, more budget tracking throughout the year, maybe not every month, quarterly, something so that we can start to pinpoint, hey, we're, we're mostly overspending on our sub side of things. We're, you know, this has happened so that we can have these conversations earlier and that way they can be more positive and productive instead of, um, angry after the fact and scrambling. So that some of these work would be good.
Yeah. One of the things I see is, I mean, this year we're only going up, not only, whatever, 1.2 million is the increase. We're already talking right now for next year saying we're going to go up another 1.2 million for the things that we're cutting this year. Whatever it is this year, when we get to these cuts and how we vote on this and how we vote on it, but I think we have to, all during next year, we have to be thinking about this, saying, no matter what's what, we need to do this. So we have to come up with some efficiency ideas. I mean, you were mentioning about the, the subs, trying to figure out how to, you know, say your money's finished, if you, you spend all or however it is, but there has to be some, we can't just say business as usual. We have no idea what the board of supervisors are going to do for us next year, but they're probably going to be the same people on the, next year and they probably will do the same thing this year. But we, and we will be the same. We need to work together and say, okay, not, let's not just ask for everything and all together. Let's figure out, say, we know there's going to be a low budget. We know already, we have some, some thoughts. What are some things that we can think about cutting along the way or reducing or whatever it might be? So I think it's just, it's going to be a good year to, to regroup and sort of see. Considering we already have a, we have a markup already on our agenda saying we need to think about these people next year, which I agree with. So it's just a matter of, you can't have everything, that's the one thing we've learned. So we have to spend this year thinking about what are some things we can do for efficiency, saying, or some savings that do not affect the students and their educational experience. That's when two subs.
And we have to keep in mind too, while we're looking at all these dollar figures, uh, who was helpful for me to hear the supervisors tell us, every 600,000 dollars that you spend, we have to raise taxes by a penny. So, um, I think if we start looking at some of these numbers in terms of what it is going to cost the taxpayers and of unity, while we're in the early stages of this, for end of fiscal year, um, it helps make the, the dollars more, more real and the conversations had early on more important.
And any questions for Mr. Valentine or Dr. Ballinger? Is there a motion?
I move that the proposed fiscal year 2025 school operating budget be approved in the amount of 76,193,989 dollars as discussed. I further move that the food and service budget in the amount of 4,109,667 dollars and the capital improvement facilities budget in the amount of 1,307,500 dollars also be approved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion on this?
I want to just mention that the last time this was brought up, I voted against the budget because I was uninformed, I was not included. I mean, I get it, I'm not on the budget committee, but I wasn't competent to make a decision as to whether we should approve it. Um, I'm very happy to see that we've reduced the amount of money. Obviously, there was some sharpening, that was able to be done to reduce the amount of money, so I'm happy to see that, even, even though it's, it's going to come back next year. Um, so to go from almost a 3% increase asked down to 1.7 isn't, is a good thing you might be going down. So I feel a little more confident about it and that the explanations, Dr. Ballinger, you gave for the, the things that you, you think should be cut and then you discussed here with cabinet, Mr. Valentine's on board, is he confident that these are the, obviously you don't want to cut any of it to get it, but if you had to cut some of these are the things to cut rather than just willy-nilly going through and slashing things. So I'm glad you were the ones that had to go through it, cut these things, um, rather than leaving it to us because we're, we're not obviously non-professionals knowing what exactly you need, but we have the responsibility, fiscal responsibility to vote on this as we're bound to.
Well, it's not the fun part of the job.
Pardon me?
It's not the fun part of the job.
Which court is John?
Any other discussion on this?
I, I just want to say, and this is not pointing fingers, but I feel like if we could come in with the art realistic ask of the county early on, if we were, say, asking for extra of 150,000, 200,000, even a 300,000, I think they would have been more inclined to, to give it to us. And that's just a part of the process that I have objected to, which is why I abstained from voting for the budget last time. I'm going to do so this time as well.
The bike too? Mr. Valentine, can you do a roll call please?
Um, Mrs. Lowe?
Hi.
I am chair. Those are not gay?
Gay.
Um, Dr. Funk?
Hi.
Mr. McFadden?
Hi.
This is Salins.
I abstain. Are you moving on? Five-minute break, please. Very, next up this evening, we're going to talk about the 2024-25 salary scales approval. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak on this?
So, attached to the agenda item are the 24-25 salary scales that reflect the increases that Dr. Ballinger referred to, uh, for the teachers and IAs as well as, as well as the rest of the staff.
Bless him, Thomas Lee.
So these are the, these are the ones that we just approved with the monkey increases. Yes.
The only note that I had, because on the, uh, the trade worker category, it lists the increased pay for degrees, but really like, the auto mechanics, they'll, they'll need a bachelor's degree. I would, and then we talked about this, the pass of changing the verdict. It should be more for certification and this would be what, where I would like to see it lean towards. Um, he had the extra buffs in pain for the extra certifications that are actually relevant for those trades.
So I do agree with you on that. We talked about that in cabinet. I think what is, they had the degrees on there because there were some people that had actual degrees that came in as a, as managerial member or something of that major. So they put them on those skills at some point in time. Uh, but as we discussed in cabinet the other day, we're going to go through and actually going to get with Mr. Helmick back there to work out certification requirements, um, and actually put those certification requirements for next, going into next year on our, on our salary scales. So, that's, we were discussing just on Tuesday.
Certification requirements.
That same thing with transportation, yeah.
Certification requirements or additional pay?
Additional pay, additional pay. So if you have, if you're certified in this, this and this, you hold so many certifications that you're going to get X dollars, or if you hold this certification, it's going to be an additional, um, bonus or side benefit or whatever supplement. So, yes, it would be for supplements.
Any additional questions for Mr. Lee? Is there a motion? I move that the Warren County School Board approve the 2024-25 salary scale. Is there a second?
A second.
Any additional discussion? All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next up, we have the approval for the 24-25 insurance rates. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on that this evening?
Uh, again, these are the three options that, uh, Dr. Ballinger and, uh, Mr. Valentine presented, uh, with, with Dr. Ballinger's recommendation being option three. The, the three options were for the attachments there at the bottom.
And the one that we discussed that you had recommended was option three, you said in question. Any questions for Mr. Lee on this?
Um, the only thing that I have with this, it's not a question, obviously, you already know what we're doing, but, um, when this is uploaded to the agenda, two of the three attachments were blurred, unable to be read. Um, I sent an email requesting for that to be corrected on Friday. Mr. McFadden called it up on Monday, um, and it, it ended up not being fixed until right before this meeting. So I know I've said it before and I'm going to say it again, I'm going to start to stick to it. Like if it's not, if we don't have the information to review in advance before a meeting, I do not consider that good governance and I, I will not continue to go all to it.
There were some corrections that we had to get with McGriff on, on Monday and worked through those things we noticed. Actually, it was on, yeah, on Monday and Tuesday that we were working through to get some, padded some things on and then we had to get some of them dates and that, that's why it took so long to get some of that back on.
It's just happening more frequently and I, I know that I fielded at least two calls from the teachers who wanted to review the, the information and, and couldn't. And I'd be not okay with that. And you also didn't respond to give me some information to say, hey, well, that, I understand it's not legible, more information is coming. It was just completely ignored.
Is there a motion on the insurance? Is there a motion on the insurance?
I move that the Warren County School Board approves option number three, insurance rate proposals for the 24, 25 planned year.
Is there a second?
A seconded.
Any discussion on that? All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Yep. Abstain.
Did you get that, Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
And then next we have the substitute plan for Warren County Public Schools, 24 and 25 school years. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on that this evening?
Sir, they wait.
Um, again, we're, we're just asking if we could partner with ESS again with contract that they sent for the 24, 25 years attached.
Any questions from Mr. Lee?
I have a question. Last, our last meeting, we talked about saying, you know, obviously this is what the committee showed, ESS, and that's where we're going. Obviously we voted on the budget. I would highly recommend, I, I looked through the, the budget for the contract from a couple of years ago. I couldn't find last year's, but completely it was pretty much exactly the same thing. And so I have my guess is that last year's was exactly the same thing. But yet we're going into the exact same sort of situation with the exact, seemingly an exact same budget per se about agreement, where some of us weren't all happy with how they produced. I know we had talked last time about saying having some, not guarantees, but expectations of fill rates or expectations of, you know, where the cap's going to come into it. And it was just, it's just another thing saying, we, we had a problem with this company. Maybe, maybe not everyone has, I understand that. Some people have it and some of the board members have. It'd be good to have some sort of precaution or something, maybe it's not in the, maybe it's not in the proposal or the agreement, but something that people are aware that we're looking at. You, you self admitted and said you're going to be watching it closely and, you know, keeping an eye on it. If we have to bail on them, we have to bail on them. But I'm just saying, we're going to be, this is one of these things that for the year as it goes along, I know I'm going to be looking at it very seriously. Because this could be, I'm looking at it as the low hanging fruit, as they say, of money that could be really saved. It go towards the million plus that we need to come up with next year. So I would just recommend that you, you, you know, keep whatever records and track and data, whatever we, we have to do to see how they're performing. I want them to succeed. I really want them to succeed. I want them to be awesome. But again, based on what we've had, we have to, have to keep an eye on it. So I would recommend, again, there's no evidence in the, in the agreement that there's any changes to anything, the way they've operated in the past, which, you know, you're the one reading, you're the one signing. If I, I would just say from our point of view, we're going to want to keep an eye on them in some other fashion. So if you're keeping notes or data reports, it would be very good for us to know.
I'd really like for us to, going forward, just some of the things that Dr. Ballinger already mentioned with just addressing the underlying issue, which is staff absences. Just maybe that's something you could also work to bring to some work sessions in the future with us. Do you, what can we do? I had, I've had some different teachers reaching out with some different ideas on, you know, maybe ways to improve our school calendar. Just different things that we could look at from different angles to try to reduce the known words as well. In addition to some of the things done for Mel and your thought earlier.
And I think they're going to have somebody here on site for it.
The contract.
So that would be, so that would be similar to like Ms. Kinsey, you know, have a regular update from. Something that could be something.
Right, well, that's from ESS, but then like from Warren County Public.
So I.
Downside. Whole.
Yeah.
It's, so what concerns me about this is, you know, earlier when we discussed the SCMA contract, you had found some, some issues that verbiage and, and details that you are not going to be comfortable side that contract until those items were in there. And this ESS situation has been discussed now for quite some time. And all of the promises that they would do better, I don't see any of those promises then reflected into this contract. We discussed having a do not exceed, it's not in here. We discussed having that they would actually have someone on site daily, which we had promised last year as well and did not happen. As that is not in this contract. I saw there was payment for non placement. There was a clause in here that are, that no one can complain about their shortcomings. I, I didn't pull the old contracts.
It's in the old one too.
Didn't hold one shield, well, I guess, I guess I burnt that one. But if, if they're making these promises, they should be willing to put them into the contract. And we didn't sign a contract with SCMA saying, oh, well, it's good faith that you're going to follow the law. No, we wanted that contract written correctly. And, and our board, I think, maybe we're trusting and we have believed promises from lots of other entities in the past. And it, it might do that every time. So I would really like to see this contract revised before we go forward with, with signing this. And also just a, a point that needs to be made of note is that the committee selected from options only given as choose from these three outsourcing sub companies. Our committee was not given, found out after the fact, was not given the option to bring subs back in house. So to me, that did not feel like a very truthful process of we are, that this is definitely the, the best option going forward. Because the committee was never given the option to choose, bring the things back in house. And we've discussed that since January. It says in the explanation summary, a planned free substitutes back in house was discussed in January. Why was it not allowed to be devised by the committee who was reviewing this? Because we would have an extra $300,000 to be working with right now, had that been the choice.
My understanding of that was they were reviewing the RMPs that came in for the substituted companies. So I would be expecting them to look at those three companies. And then when I calculated it, we're really talking, I mean, I know splitting hairs, but we're talking about about $211,000 difference. Because really it's a 26% overage, not worth the 30.9%. So just to be accurate in the numbers that we're talking about. Why doesn't the contract have the addition of onsite?
So I think that could, that, that could be added. And I think that's something we need to do and to reach out because that is something that we've had lengthy discussions with them about. That wouldn't you agree, Mr. Lee, that we were, it would add, we need to have them add that in? So I, I would, I would agree that we do need to modify that, you know, to get that added. And, and also I know, Mr. Lee, you had talked about some, some metrics that you were looking at that, that you would like to make sure that they're met well, correct?
Correct.
Would you feel comfortable adding those into the contract as well, that, that the metrics that you are wanting to review throughout?
Yes.
So, so I think we, we, we can go back and, and have Mr. Lee work with them and say, okay, I want to have the onsite foot in the contract. And here are the metrics that I am going to be looking at from a HR perspective. I would like them in the contract as well. And then, you know, if he can work on that and get that approved, you know, get that back to us by then it's Wednesday. You know, we, we have a short turnaround. I don't know if that, if that can happen or not. But, but I think that at least gives, you know, Mr. Lee, the opportunity to get the things that he wants in the contract as well.
Should be able to turn around because you've been talking about it for a long time with them.
Yeah, just, and I agree with that, that those things should be in, in the contract, especially the onsite.
Right, and whatever, there was one of those slides when they were giving the presentation and the slide said something like, here's, here's your offerings or whatever. Forget what they all were, but some of the trainings or whatever, but those should, those should be in there. Because again, cadre looks pretty much exactly going to two years.
Yeah, in the section, the 4.15, where the division shall be solely responsible and control teacher absences and any budgetary impact resulting there. Um, I think I really do think we need to have the budget tracking of the sub expenses throughout the year. And if we are seeing that we are running over, it is cheaper for us to start, like you were talking about, billing them in house, teachers covering for teachers. I, I would really like to see the do not exceed added in here.
I think really that's going to be kind of on us.
Yes.
Like to watch, to watch that now that we're talking about tracking what absences are and what the budget.
They don't bill us unless we ask them to ourselves.
Yeah, so that's really on us. I mean, we're the driving force of what that's cost, I guess. I thought it sounded great at first too, like, oh, we're just going to have a Taft that listen on money. But if we use up all of our subs by December alone.
Something else that's in here that I've heard people do is, you know, the people who know their, their subs that work at their schools, the principal or the secretary or somebody calls and it's the same company at work. It actually doesn't allow that to happen. It actually says, division will not hire personnel employed by the company on either part-time, full-time basis. I understand why they would do it, but in the contract it says you can't do it. So whether, if it's, if we stick with that in the contract, we should tell the school principals, you, you always can't just cherry pick your people and say, I have my little cadre of people over here that I pick from. Cause you have to go through the, through the people, according to the contract. I mean, I personally think it'd be good to say, if we find our own subs, we, we don't pay the, the thing, we don't pay the 30%. It'd be nice to have that in there. If we find our own subs, we don't have to pay the additional stuff. Again, I don't know what they're going to go with it, but it is something I've heard happens to some of the schools. So if we're going to go with this contract as written, or at least that, that verbiage in there, we're going to have to tell somebody, some people, employees, they can't find their own subs.
I'd like, I disagree with that though, because I, I know teachers that like their own, like they have certain people that they like to use. So maybe we can wish removes that section from the, from the contract.
They're ESS employees in that case.
But like they're.
Right.
They're, I mean, we look at this, ESS is only responsible for placing 24% of the placements. And a lot of the teachers that I speak to, they say when they get a good ESS sub that they like, they get their personal information. And then the teacher is doing the work to call around their list of preferred subs to, to fill it themselves. So really the teacher's doing work for ESS at that time, but ESS is still receiving the full 30.9%. So I mean, really 76% of the time, it's not ESS that's filling these positions. But they're still collecting that 30.9%.
So we'll, we'll, we'll go back and have them add some metrics and, and add the, the position to the contract. And, and Mr. McFadden, I was looking for that in one area. Because the way I read that was that they did not want us hiring their employees. And, and so, you know, unfortunately we have hired quite a bit.
Right.
Well, that's what they tell me. And I, I was looking for what section that was in, but you know, they, they, they know that we are, you know, we get a, a sub that comes in and they work and they're, and the principal like them and there's a position that opens, we hired it. And then they have to refill that sub position because we're taking the employees.
I read that, really just read the document, that's what, so that if you read the headlines, it's use a substitute teacher by the division directly. That, that just, so yeah, I, from reading it, I was like, oh yeah, that's, they just mean, you know, don't cherry pick our people and start hiring them. But from, from the subsection heading, makes aside use of substitute teacher by the division directly. And that's the thing that our teachers are doing, which I, I personally would like them to continue doing, but it's a contrary apparently. Or we asked them, is it contrary to the contract?
Would we hire them from ESS, we hire somebody from ESS? Is it like hiring from a temp agency where you have to, to like buy them out?
So our players put this on action item, the poor and it's.
Yes, for next week and Mr. Lee, don't buy a check on those, on the matrix, the metrics that you want to be, that you want added. And that way they do have the onsite.
Do we buy it, but Lee, great.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We get an action to convene into closed session.
Doing the work session?
Then. No work session this evening.
This motion is made for this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board, become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711. The school board desires to discuss the following matter in closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711 A line, discussion, consideration or interviews of respective candidates for employment is not an appointment promotion before at least a motion. Salaries, disappointing or resignation of employees of the school work, specifically the personnel report, the personnel report addendum, the superintendent's evaluation and employee grievance number 20240410-1.
Is there a second?
A seconded.
Mr. Ball, I'd like to hear a couple.
Mrs. Salins?
Hi.
Mr. McFadden?
Hi.
Dr. Funk?
Hi.
Madam Chair?
Hi.
Mrs. Lowe?
Hey, good.
It's in.